Welcome. Good evening, this is Mary-Kate Decorse, Chair of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. I'm calling our Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees meeting to order at 6:04 PM on Wednesday, May 14, 2025. This is an open hybrid meeting of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. It's being recorded at Auburn Public Library in the Merriam Room. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Vision. Is anyone else here recording the meeting? Permit me to confirm that members of this body and persons anticipated on the agenda are present. Matt Toth?
Present.
Erica Briesacker?
Present.
Vera Corain?
Present.
Nan Johnson?
Present.
Lindsay Baker?
Present.
And I, Mary Decourse, am present. Town employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Michael Zeller?
Present.
Thank you. So we will, the first item on the agenda tonight, we're gonna have a very brief meeting, and most of it is going to be reporting out the director's report and our progress on the strategic plan, for the most part. And I do, would like us to be succinct if we can in our commentary, because we would like to get over to the select room to witness some of the town managers' interview process following some of us on the board. So the first item that we have on our agenda is to review and vote on the minutes from April. Thank you, Dr. Briesacker.
You're welcome.
My only question is, under the third page, I know Suzette Dowd, and it says Cynthia Carey. Are those names all correct?
That's what I had written down. And I did try to search, no, Cynthia.
Cynthia Carey.
C-A-R-E-Y.
That's it, that's it.
And I was like, I couldn't confirm spelling.
Carey, okay. That's what I thought, I thought that was referencing Cynthia.
I will fix that.
That's fine. The bullet says Cynthia, and again, we've fixed the spelling, Suzette Dowd has been recruited from the Friends of APL. Cheryl Carlson, Principal of Packerchog School, and Kristin Pappas of Town Hall will join as well. Are those correct?
Sorry.
I know Kristin, and that is how she spells her name, but I don't know the principal. Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry for misspelling.
No, so just to be spelling.
John Carey, the Senator, that's how it is.
Right. Okay, I have, I have a move for Matt to approve. Do I have second?
Second.
Very good. Can I do a roll call? Again, Matt is yes. Erica?
Yes.
Vera is yes. Nan?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
And Mary. So very good, with the change of the spelling of Cynthia's last name. Thank you, everyone. The second agenda item is public comment. Does anyone wish to share public comment? Nope. Okay, very good. Thank you so much. The next item, three, update from the strategic plan and possible vote, and I know you sent an email that we do not have to vote on SPAC members, but I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I'm happy to give an update on the status of where we stand with SPAC recruitment. And then, I think it's maybe for a little quick discussion, just because it was not my understanding that the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee is the acronym SPAC, and I was not under the impression that it was a subcommittee for the board or anything. So while we have already voted for Vera and I to be the representatives from the Board of Trustees, my understanding was it's a sort of volunteer community group that is separate, that is more for the library, as opposed to something reporting to the Board of Trustees, but I'm happy to discuss that, but.
That would be my understanding.
Mine as well.
Okay. Okay, so I don't believe that we need to vote on the additional membership or the volunteers that have agreed to participate. And so, as of now, it's Mike, myself and Vera, myself and Vera having been approved by this board to participate. Cynthia Carey and Suzette Dowd from the Friends have volunteered and agreed to participate in the committee. Andrea, is it Colibri?
Yes.
And Jared from the library staff, these are the library staff that are gonna participate. Andrea being the new staffer, who's already Services Librarian, and Jared, who's been on staff for quite a long time, so we thought that was a good pairing. Cheryl Carlson, who is the Principal of Packerchog Elementary, has agreed to participate in the group, as has Kristin Pappas, the Director of Recreation and Culture for the Town of Auburn. So some really nice mix of perspectives there. And then, I know Dan Carpenter has expressed his interest and just wants confirmation from the Select Board that he's, they agree that he can sort of represent for them.
The Select Board has voted.
And they have voted?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, I wasn't sure about that. And then Liz Lafrancois from the Cultural Council has volunteered, and we confirmed that because she can participate virtually, that she is, she's all in. And I think we were just waiting to hear back about whether Pastor Julie Sidron would want to participate. We did have three other potential slots, and I know Vera, you said you just still hadn't heard back from.
I have not, yeah.
Okay. And I don't know, Mike, we haven't talked to you in the last week or so, so I don't know if you've heard anything else or found another patron.
We've been trying to find a patron to be involved, and it's just, the people that we were hoping to get onboard, we haven't been able to get in contact with them, so my feeling is we should probably just move ahead with what we've got now.
So I just wanna make one correction for the notes. Liz Lafrancois is an Auburn resident. She's the co-chair of the Special Education PAC Parent Group in Auburn. She's also the founder of, we call it the Snow Squalls. It's a special hockey program for kids with disabilities. So she's an activist in the special ed community, but she's also a parent of a teenager at the high school and an elementary school student who has a profile of a disabled student.
Okay.
She's awesome. She's a powerhouse.
That's wonderful. So I think as long as we can then just confirm whether Pastor Julie would like to be in, I mean, that brings us up to 13 people, which is right in the range of what we were shooting for, so I think it's a nice group, and it seems to be well-oaked, I think a good representation of the town. So hopefully, yeah, we are actually supposed to meet briefly with Barbara tomorrow, just to touch base on some outstanding items, and so we'll let her know that I think we're good to go, and she has just an initial survey that she'll email out to the group.
That should have gone out.
Did it already go?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
If I may backtrack just a wee bit, so the thing about voting for this group, the way it was explained to me, and I have it in writing, because I have a brain like a sieve sometimes, the vote tab point should be done because this is a multi-member body being created for the purpose of recommending and advising action, which is the adoption of the strategic plan, by the Board of Trustees, and it's therefore subject to the open meeting law. So that being the case, there seems to be no harm in voting to accept a block of volunteers, just to make sure that we're.
Okay, yeah, I'm not against it, I just wanted to.
It's gonna require all the work that goes on with the open meeting, they've got to put in agendas, have two days ahead of all the rest of that stuff, the doctor saying.
No, I think it's just that they're an advisory group, so we're gonna officially vote to accept them as the group that's gonna advise us, they're all volunteers, my understanding is it's gonna be done virtually, right? So I don't think the same rules apply, but we wanna make sure that when we take them on, that we're fine. But if you're more comfortable, just, you know, we can leave background to Barbara Oliverius and Yesco, because I assume this is part of her standard process, and she's obviously not in any way new to getting to the game, so just chill out.
Yeah, when we had talked before, she seemed to think, basically, anything that goes on with the strategic plan was not privy to the open meeting law, just because it was more, yeah, advisory was, viewed more as like workshopping and that kind of thing.
Like brainstorming.
Yeah, as opposed to.
And Matt, is your concern that it would put constraints if we did vote?
I just think it's just so tough, then, when you try to establish a meeting and make sure you get, you know what that's like.
Yes, I do.
And I think that that strategic plan advisory committee is more something that would be for Mike to head than it is for the Board of Trustees, really.
Right, except Vera and I, you guys have authorized that we are participants at representing the board, and we've approved that, but I think I agree that it's ultimately rolling up to advise Mike on the direction for the strategic plan, which ultimately circles back to us for a formal approval later, later on word.
Yes.
But that's a separate activity, so, yeah, it's just a recommending board, kind of for brainstorming.
Vera, Mike, you could really ask Barbara whether she's ever had that happen, or whether she knows that that needs to be done.
We had discussed it with her, yeah, we had talked, Lindsay and I had talked with her a little bit, and she seemed to think that it would not fall under any of the.
I'm not attached to how come here, so.
Thank you.
Because she does this a lot, right?
If it turns out that we do need to, we're meeting to reorganize, we can always do it quick.
Yes, it's true.
Triple check our sources for the reorg meeting.
But I think she probably.
And then the only other thing was the sore, scheduling for the sore exercise, and I wasn't sure whether things stood with that.
Yes.
Uh-oh, Eric.
Well, so I can say what's looking to be the most promising date is the evening of June 9. I will say, yeah, I'm hoping a couple of people, and that groan of acknowledgement coming from Nan, she is one of them, I'm hoping people can shift their schedules maybe a teeny bit, because the sore exercise is scheduled for two hours, and I know there, and actually, Cynthia, you were one of the other ones that's slightly outside of that range, if you're able to at all shift, and I will talk to these people directly, if they're able to shift their schedule.
From what, six to eight, or?
Yeah, I think it was six, I think six to eight was when it appeared to be the best time. I'll double check, and I'll reach out to you.
I'll answer the one to me, but I can do that, so.
Okay.
I'm not a problem for that.
It would be great, we have good, you know, with the six of you all, and then I think there are four, Nan is doing double duty, but I think with Nan, there's four members of the Friends. It would be great to get a few more members of the Friends, but I've also spoken to them a few times, and I kind of think the folks who've reached out at this point are the ones who are willing to engage, so I think that will be about 10 people, nine or 10 people, so that's not bad. She said no more than 15, so again, we're kind of right in that window. So, yeah, I think we're in okay shape with that, as long as, as long as a couple people can be a teeny bit flexible with their schedule, I think that should be manageable. As far, I had just taken a few other notes about things going on, so you should have all received the SPAC survey. If anybody hasn't finished that yet, it only takes like three or four minutes, so it's just a quick survey about where you're standing with library stuff. It should have been emailed to you a few days ago.
Yeah, it's an email from the consultant, so if you haven't gotten it, then we should double check the email address.
There was, I know there were a few people who didn't get it.
Have to look and see.
I know it's from Barbara, so. Yes, favorite piece from Barbara.
Yeah, I've said to a few people, I think Lindsay and I get something like 20 or so emails from Barbara a day, so.
Oh, my goodness. I'm a little lost in my.
For my own sake, I have.
If anybody has, I know Matt has said so, if anybody has not gotten that survey, let me know.
I don't think I have. I can't find it.
Since we're gonna talk with her tomorrow, we'll maybe have her send out a second round to everybody, just to make sure. This one is not vital, but it's just helpful to kind of have some information going into things, so she emailed all the members of the advisory committee, plus all of the board, plus all of the Friends officers, so just to get feedback from those folks, so we can sort that out. We're currently working on, Lindsay and I are working on the draft questions for the community survey, the broad-based one that will be going out to everybody in June, and we have our first advisory committee meeting scheduled for May 29 from 6 to 8. It's, as far as I've heard from people, everybody's comfortable with it being fully online, so we're not planning on doing anything at the physical library for that. That's all I've got.
And I think that option made it reasonable for some people that that might be an obstacle to get here, so thank you for that.
Yeah, it works nice. It was just a little one, yeah.
Exactly. Yeah, very good. Anything else on the strategic plan update?
Yes, more than enough.
Great, the board, before we listen to the director's report, that will include update on adult programming and other updates, I saw your email.
Yeah, adult programming update will be about two seconds. I do have some other things, so you've all got the bill schedules, if anybody has any questions.
I was looking at the charge for Sturbridge Village of the aquarium. One was 400, and the aquarium was two. I thought that was a considerable difference for the Boston.
Well, you know what that is? Okay, so that is not the full museum pass.
That's what I was.
The aquarium has started a new program. Normally, the aquarium pass ends in May, they're not available during the summer.
Really?
So this $200 was an additional 200. They are starting to circulate a summer pass now, so this will cover June, July, and August, which I think.
It's worth, it's worth.
Yeah, every library I've ever worked at, the Newland Aquarium Pass has been a top performer, so.
I thought that was too much of a difference to not have that explanation.
Yeah, yeah. I wish there was, you said this.
What is the Wells Fargo financing, what is that?
Oh, that's the, that's their service fee for the photocopier. I do not know why it's Wells Fargo, but that is the vendor that would pay to. So moving on, I gave you each this little title card, and I used to do these in Shrewsbury for the Board of Trustees, I don't know if this is like a helpful type of stat.
Yes.
If there's other stats that you would like to see, I can do that instead. These are stats that are pretty easy to get my hands on quickly, so, and they're kind of our, I would say, our bigger stats as far as performance. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that.
Do you guys have any way to tell how many are Auburn residents versus not, which is not because I exclude anybody, but we wanna make sure that we are expanding the Auburn audience.
For some of these, we could do that, that would be a bit more involved. I could probably get it for items loaned, possibly for holds filled and museum pass, definitely for museum passes, and maybe for computer usage. I couldn't get it for visitors or for event attendees.
So how about every so often, just give us the Auburn birthdays every year?
Yeah, I would assume, like a lot of the libraries in this area, it's very.
Yeah.
I know this is for folks from Blister and.
Well, surrounding paths, it could be October, November, it could be anywhere, yeah.
Do you mind if I just read this for the purpose of the.
Oh, sure.
Because this is something to shout about and be proud of. This is in April. In April, the Auburn Public Library welcomed 3,444 visitors, loaned 7,388 physical items, loaned 2,329 ebooks, fulfilled 1,308 holds, hosted 23 events with 167 attendees, loaned 126 museum passes, hosted 523 computer sessions for 336 hours. That's something to be very proud of. Thank you for that.
Whatever folks say, there's not much going on at the library.
I have one actual question, so about the holds, do you guys sort of look at that, assess that for trends, are there things where from that it then informs procurement going forward?
Yeah, yeah, there's a few different things. Obviously, coming in partway through the year, and then using two of my selectors for each other of the year, acquisitions have been a little.
Shaky.
We'll say, we'll say speedy this year, but yes, there are CW Mars, as well as Overdrive provide, you can get both what items Auburn patrons are putting on hold, as well as just like generally popular things that are being put on hold across the system. I will say, the last time I placed orders, that was heavily influencing what I was buying, so, and with our ebook selections, that's actually, the system automatically assembles lists of things that are heavily put on hold, so you can just put the cards right through.
Yeah, I have a user of the ebooks, it's easier than trying to keep a light on for me than anything, so, but I've been impressed with short wait times, like it seems like a very well-managed platform, and I know it's shared, but it's nice to have so much access.
Yeah, yeah. CW Mars policies, they try to have one, I believe it's one circulating copy for every 10 holds, but most of the libraries I've worked at, including Auburn, tend to shoot for a much tighter number than that. I would say ours is closer to like one in four, one in six. Any other questions on that one? So I did, since we talked a little bit about budget, I just quickly threw in the budget report sheet. I would assume this is very confusing, I still find this very confusing, so this was more a placeholder to denote what would be helpful numbers for the board going forward, what would be a good way to present budget numbers, bearing in mind that running budget reports is much more complicated than the reports that I'd like to get the statistics numbers.
As long as we can understand what's going on here, I don't, this is probably the easiest, isn't it?
Yeah, great.
I mean, I just got this from somebody in the accounting department, so, and it's been very, very, actually, I should say, somebody formerly from the accounting department that's currently in HR, but is pitching in while all data is away. I mean, the most important numbers to look at are available, but the available budget column, and I should say, that last section with like security lights, computers, those are all, those are not yearly accounts, it's everything down to the travel budget is like the stuff that we're dealing with this year. So the available column is the money that is still present in all of the accounts, encumbered funds are funds that have been allocated but not technically spent yet, so some of those are things where it's like we have outstanding invoices that we're paying, some of it is just money that we put aside in anticipation, so it can be a little fuzzy on exactly how much we have left to spend, because like I said, some of that has been clearly allocated, where some of it is more based off of assumptions and trends.
Would this be the place to discuss the new position for, what is it, so not circulation, reference, reference?
Yeah, so my understanding is we have enough budget, starting with fiscal year 2026, to fund that position for half a year, so like, it's.
From July to the.
So it will be, it'll be January, December or January, we're planning on.
Because you have no hire at this point, you've got to go through a process, so.
Right, yeah, so we will, we've got, and when I say half a year, I don't mean it's like a temp position, it's half a year, and then continue going forward, year after year, but, so the plan for that position, I was hoping to get it on a little bit sooner, but just town budget being what it is, there wasn't enough, you know, liquid funds to get it, so we're looking at December, January for that position.
So this part, you spent 97% of that budget.
Yep.
So I just had a question, building and grounds, 4,500, is that things that were built on the property? It's in the second paragraph, and it's the third from the bottom.
4,500 is, no, that's for like supply.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know there are two building and ground funds, that is something that I'm looking into, why that is not just one line item.
Oh, yeah, that's a good question. Last one question.
Yeah, there's some budget cleanup that will need to be done going forward, but talking with the accounting department, it does not sound overly complicated.
What's the library M?
That is library materials, so that is, yeah, so that is our book purchasing budget, and that, of all these line items, that is the one that has to be absolutely expended as of.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. And can you speak to the transfers? They're heavily in the staff section, like.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think a lot of this happened before I came onboard, so.
Does this reflect the shift in order to get the children's librarian, for example?
No, because her salary is separate. The two assistant technology and assistant admin, I believe, and again, this was before I came onboard, but I believe those were the switches to bump up their salaries.
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
And, yeah, and it's looking like that was taken from the circulation, or most of it was taken from the circulation fund.
Okay.
But we should have, I will have to talk to accounting about some of the available budget, because most of this should be encumbered already, but that's just a, that's just a bookkeeping thing. Just with the open positions, we will likely have a little bit of salary money at the end of this, which we'll roll over and hopefully use for other.
Well, nearly in June, July, it's pretty close to 100% for everybody.
Yeah.
Gosh.
Very close.
Any other questions?
Just on the ones where you spend 100%, I guess, professional services and miscellaneous supply and heating, well, hopefully we won't need heating, but, you know, that's, it's just, we're at, you know, you've still got a month, a month list to go.
Heating, it's a little bit different, my understanding, because we get, we spend this line item, and then the rest of it gets paid by the town itself.
I don't understand that, but I know that that's the way it works.
Because the town does not want patrons to freeze.
They generally.
The account is fine.
Expiring exposure. Yeah, miscellaneous supplies, yeah, that's just supplies, we can use some of the building and grounds, for most of our supplies, and what was the other one you said?
Just 100, is that 100% is a professional services?
Oh, yeah, and I believe that is, oh, that is our water delivery, and so that should be the encumbered amount there, should be enough to get us to the nice.
Makes sense. Okay, got it, okay, yep, I get what I'm reading now, okay, thank you. I think this is, this is it, this is everything we need, this is great, this is very helpful to contextualize, just to see how it's progressing, and if there's a flag that needs to be raised at any point in the year, this is it.
Great, I will endeavor to do that. Did you, did you want that every month or quarterly, or how?
It's easy, you have to do it every month, that's great.
We'll see how stressed Dave is.
Sign him up for it, before he's done.
Okay, so then quickly moving forward, do some other things, so I wanted to show you all. But we should have, I, I will have to talk to accounting about some of the available budget because most of this should be encumbered already, but that's just a, that's just a bookkeeping thing. Just with the open positions, we will likely have a little bit of salary money at the end of this, which we'll roll over and, you know, hopefully use for.
Nearly in June, July, it's pretty close to one hundred percent for everybody.
Any other questions? Just on the ones where you spend a hundred percent, I guess, professional services and miscellaneous supply and heating. Well, hopefully we won't need heating, but you know, that's, it's just we're at, you know, you still got a month, a month left to go.
Heating, it's a little bit different, my understanding, because we get, we spend this line item and then the rest of it gets paid by the town itself.
Okay.
I'll never understand it, but I know that that's the way it works.
Because the town does not want patrons to freeze.
They generally. Expiring from exposure and. Yeah, miscellaneous supplies, yeah, that's just supplies. We can use some of the building and grounds for most of our supplies. What was the other one you said?
Just one other, is that a hundred percent? Is it professional services?
Oh, yeah, and I believe that is, oh, that is our water delivery. And so that should be, the encumbered amount there should be enough to get us stabilized.
Got it. Makes sense. Okay, got it. Okay, yep, I get, I get what I'm reading now. Okay, thank you. I think this is, this is it. This is everything we need. This is great. This is very helpful. It can textualize just to see how it's progressing and if there's a flag that needs to be raised at any point in the year. This is, this is it. Great, thank you. This was great.
I will never do that. Did you, did you want that every month or quarterly or how?
It's easy to have to do every month. That's great.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll see how stressed Dave is.
Sign him up for it before he's back.
Okay, so then quickly moving forward, do some other things. So I wanted to show you all, the next numerous things are flyers from our community services librarian. She has just really hit the ground with us and has rolled out, I think about half a dozen different weekly programs that we will now be doing. Oh, the first one is just about our, our Facebook account that we have on social media. Once we've got that kind of stabilized, the plan is to do Instagram as well. But yeah, we've been getting, I think we have over a hundred followers now in the span of a week or two, so. Any questions about?
Good to see there.
No, I appreciate it though.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely necessary. So yeah, so she has rolled out a number of different things. Lego Club on Mondays.
Display? I didn't notice what's on the display in the foyer.
Oh, I don't think that, did she say?
Yeah, she said it, a display, but I don't know where.
So they're actually in the.
In the room?
They're in the aisles.
That makes more sense.
About the, above the shelves. The baby toddler story time is kind of an expansion of the story times that we've been doing at the library. So that's Andrea and Caitlin that both manage that. And then, oh, the preschool story time is also a part of that. Alphabets is a new program that she's rolling out that's focusing on reading comprehension. And that is Wednesdays.
Is she following a curriculum of some sort or coming up with this?
These are, a lot of these are programs that she had run at, at previous libraries. She's run these at, at Hopington. I don't remember off the, my, the top of my head if she had a, a specific curriculum that she was drawing from or if it was just kind of general library best practices.
Yeah, just curious how.
Yeah.
You were a literacy specialist, a reading teacher your career, right?
So I just wondered if she was from there.
Yeah, a lot of these are, well, she, and she's a, has a background in speech pathology as well. So she has a background in a lot of, you know, comprehension and language. She's also doing literacy bingo, which that happened tonight. And is doing a teen crafting on, on Thursdays.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Right, I'm very excited to hear that.
I think the turnout has been a little low, but given the engagement, the newness of the engagement with the teen population, I think that'll take a little bit of time. So please, everybody, spread the word.
I got one who will come to this.
That, that'd be great. Yeah, a lot of the stuff with teens and in my experience at other libraries, it just takes a while for them. As they, they communicate word of mouth and people start coming, so.
In here, in the Merriam room?
Yes, yeah. That one is, because Thursdays are such prime time for other programming, occasionally it will be in the aisles as well if, if necessary.
I would strongly encourage her to reach out to Auburn Middle School and the high school too. Specifically, people think guidance classes really advise principals because, you know, we know the kids that really need something and we can kind of coach, in a coach-like way, kind of push them in the door and make sure that somebody is at the other side to greet them for some of our more reluctant social kids, which would be the kids that would really benefit from this.
Yeah, she, she has been having ongoing conversations with Beth Chamberlain, the superintendent, and with the, with the principals at all of the schools.
Excellent.
She, she and I went out to Hackachog on Friday to do a, a reading and she's going to be making a lot of solo visits to the schools going forward.
That's how to engage. That's exactly how to do it. Thank you.
She is, she has been a dynamo. Which, speaking of which, so our next item, there is a, well, I should actually say, were there any questions about any of those programs?
Just, just keep it going.
Yeah, really nice topic.
And so the next item is a list of summer reading programs or part of the summer reading program. I should mention upfront, so she has, normally summer reading is something that can take like four to six months to plan. And she has done it all in about two weeks.
Excellent.
So this is really like orders of magnitude faster. But she has put together a very, very robust children's, teen, and adult summer reading program, including presenters and performers. And these three flyers at the back of your packet are drafts of her summer reading, like raffle chart. The, the gist of summer reading will be, we're going to have twelve raffle basket prizes gizzy up between children, teen, and adult. And depending on how much of this card you fill in, you will get different raffle, different amounts of raffle tickets that you distribute amongst the baskets.
Should we, should we call this drumming instead of raffle?
Oh, right, yeah.
Watch your terminology here.
Don't want to get into a little bit of a state about that.
Well, there's, yeah, there's no purchase. This is all, this is all based off of how much you read. And she, she has spent a lot of time along with other staff like Jared and Caitlin planning out the contents of these baskets. The friends have generously funded a large chunk of it and a lot of it we've been able to just draw from the supplies that we already.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. But I, I think this will be a very successful summer reading and it's, it's definitely all up to the, the staff. Particularly just the efforts that Andrea has put into things.
It gets really great. It's much more than just children's. You've got young adults, you've got adults. That's really important and good.
I like the terminology, little kid, big kid. Yeah, very impressive. Looks like we're ready to roll here.
Yeah, yeah.
Kickoff date?
It is more June.
June twenty-third, I think I read.
Actually, June, June fifteenth. So it starts a little bit before the end.
A little tiny.
So we're starting June fifteenth.
It's great to hear that you get out to the schools and making those relationships happen. That's how to do it.
Yeah, yeah. So any questions about summer reading?
No, this looks really fun. I'll do it. Absolutely. I like how, it's, it sounds very interactive, fun, creative ideas. Check out a cookbook and make a recipe, tell a joke to the librarian. That's great. So sweet. It's fun, you know? A little bit of fun and then some serious challenges. That's great.
Yeah, so the, I believe the, just so people know, the yellow one is the YA and adult one. The blue one is the elementary school kids. And then I have an orange one that I ran out of orange paper, so you'll have the pink ones. The pink one is the pre-readers, so it's the, the little, little kids.
Great.
So as far as adult programming, we're working on. I, I would love to see something that's robust for adult programs. Given the staffing situations at the moment, I don't have the bandwidth for it. But this is just me kind of brainstorming. Going back to the reference librarian that we were talking about earlier. It is obviously vital to have somebody with that set in the building able to provide reference assistance. That being said, traditional reference assistance at every library I've ever been at is quite a bit lower than it used to be. So I think when we're constructing this position, a big chunk of what I'm going to have as the assigned duties is also developing adult programming.
That's interesting. I agree.
Which I think will be a decent overlap. And I also think will probably make the position a little more exciting. Whenever I've had to hire people in the past, programming positions are extremely competitive. So I think it will help with, because I would love to bring on somebody. I don't, I don't know if we'll get somebody as good as Andrea, but somebody with as much passion and experience as her to focus on our adult services is kind of my plan. There are a few things that I've been able to put together in my brief moments of, between strategic planning and budgeting and the things. But it would, I think it'll benefit us all to have somebody whose position is substantially devoted to adult programming.
That's exciting.
Yeah, it is.
Are there still the online author talks?
Yes, yes. And we, we realized, I think Molly had been posting those on our calendar. With her out for a little while, Jared has started doing, we, we noticed like, oh hey, it's gone a few months and those aren't there anymore. So he is, he has taken up the, the torch and is doing that. And we're also trying to just do more aggressive promotions on everything. So you should be seeing a lot more like on our social media, well, anything on our social media now. And we're trying to promote them throughout the building and in the, the constant contact emails that are going up and, and the little electronic sign that we have out front.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Have you guys reached out to Auburn Historical Society? I know they're like a small place, limited hours, but that might be an opportunity to collaborate.
Yeah, yeah, we, we have been in, in talks with them during my kind of first initial rush when I took the job. They were one of the first places that I went to speak to. So yeah, it's just having the bandwidth to do some collaboration, but I like them very much and would like to do some more work with them.
I don't know if some of you have seen that paper that we get. It's free.
Yankee Gazette. I was just gonna say, the Yankee Gazette. I think it's called, it's for like Oxford, Auburn. Yankee Express, Express.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
There were two articles in there on the Auburn Public Library. I thought they were great. And I called them to ask about the first one and they promised to get back to me and I haven't heard from them. But I wanted to kind of put them together and then give them to you because.
I know, there, there are so many, and they're, so I actually, you can find them online. I was able to find them online.
The first one?
Yes, yeah, I did find the first one online. Yeah, it's, it's, the backlog is on there. So I, I also, my neighbor wrote them, so I was congratulating her on them. But they're, they're wonderful and they're really about the whole history of the library and different folks that contributed to building, you know, putting the building together and the first librarian. And they're really wonderful. She's done a good job and a lot of research, so.
I've been on the school a long time and I learned a lot.
Yeah, no, they're great.
Would you send me that?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, let me remind myself.
So what is your neighbor's name?
I'm Helen.
Helen, because she spoke to me when I, yeah, yes. She spoke to me about how important it is to her that we have Auburn articles because she said we don't have enough entries to the, you know, we don't have enough articles. So she takes it on herself to tell the Auburn story. So she asked me when, when I visited if I could reach out to members of the board or, you know, friends and neighbors, just to be, have more contributors that are actually residents in Auburn. She's a very nice lady.
Yeah, I love. But she's passionate about the history. I think she really.
Yeah, that was, those are the ladies when I went in there to see them. I asked them if they knew you. You were already there. Then I asked them if, if fastest Julie Sodroni was in. Oh yeah, we know her. And that's where I came up with that term ubiquitous, because everywhere I go, I, I hear your names or someone else knows you already. So that's great. Any other questions or any other pieces about that you want to share?
So those are the big updates. Just a quick little thing about the, the expansion. So we had a, I think by the time of our last meeting, we had had a meeting with Matt and with some folks around town to kind of revisit the, the concept of the expansion. In the intervent, in the interim, Andrea and I have been going around the building and kind of scoping things out and, you know, measuring and speculating. We've talked to the architect that we had previously been working with a little bit to brainstorm ideas. And over the next few weeks, she and I and possibly other staff, I'm willing, are going to take some visits to other libraries that are either similar in structure to ours or not some of the ones that, that, oh my gosh, I just forgot her name, Christie, that Christie mentioned and some that Sarah mentioned. And we'll also be just kind of brainstorming and then try to come up with a plan that we'll bring back to our, our committee to hopefully get that moving forward.
Right, great.
Any update on the construction between the bridge and the sidewalk? Just.
Anecdotally, I know they've been out there almost every day working on it, so it's definitely a work in progress.
Because it will affect us, the library, very definitely along the sidewalk, maybe a new parking surface or.
Yeah, no, they're definitely working on it now. I see them out there almost every morning.
Well, the timing is good because the, is it the hundredth year anniversary of Robert Goddard is next, next year? And so I think they're planning some events and things out in that part.
Give them another year to finish.
The gentleman from the Goddard, the Goddard Society have reached out to Dory and to myself and, and they certainly have some big plans and that they've been drafting and presenting to the town.
The timing will be good to finally dust off those pictures that are in storage. I don't know where those are, but that was a pending item on the beautification subcommittee.
We were talking about that the other day, so it's definitely on my radar.
Yeah, even if just for now, we've got nothing here, I mean, just to make that wall look a little nicer, that big blank wall. Yeah, they need wire though. That was a challenge.
Great, well, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions anybody has about.
Oh, good.
That was thorough and we appreciate you. And I also want to say, you mentioned, I had got some lovely thank yous from Molly and Dave from the cards from everyone. And so just, and thank you, thank you so much. I know you've had a staff appreciation luncheon. We appreciate that as well, being invited. So if there are no other items, the next meeting scheduled is the reorganization here in the Merriam Room, Thursday, May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five at six PM. We made it that because it's two days after the election and we know that people need to be sworn in before we can vote at, at the, the next meeting. Does anybody have anything to say before I take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, one. So I have a second. Thank you, Erica. Thank you, everyone. Six forty-nine is the ending meeting.